Welcome over to Myers County Board of Commissioners Special Call Meeting, June 28th, 2021, at 4:37 PM. This is due considering appeal of the 2021 Beer and Wine License Denial for Dog's Borough LLC, DBA Quick Check.
Thank you, sir. So, the first thing we need to do is, everybody who will be speaking, if you could just introduce yourself verbally for the court reporter so she can get names. So, let's start with Mr. Kane, who's representing Dog's Borough LLC.
Yes, Adam Kane. It's A-D-A-M-C-A-I-N.
All right, then we'll move up to Ms. Wooten.
Rhonda Wooten.
Dennis Adams.
Terry Chandler.
Todd Higdon.
Brian Kirk.
Derek Foster.
And I'm Mike Pruitt, and I'm the county attorney. So, I think, Mr. Kane, what I need to do first is let Ms. Wooten just validate some documents and put some things into evidence. We'll go off the record a second so she can answer her question. Do you need Rhonda to come down here, or do you think you can?
I can get it from up there. Just speak loud.
All right, Ms. Wooten, could you just start by telling us your position here at the county?
I'm a county clerk.
And how long have you held that position?
Thirteen years.
And are you the person that receives beer and wine license applications?
Yes.
And let me show you a copy of... This is actually the ordinance.
I got that too.
Okay. Can you just identify that for the record as a copy of the Madison County Alcohol Beverage Ordinance?
Yes, it is.
And could you flip to Section 6-63G?
Okay.
And is that the provision that says basically that an applicant has to have control of the business and not be acting as a surrogate for someone who is not qualified to hold the license?
That's correct.
Let me show you Exhibit 2. Is this a copy of the application that was filed by Dog's Borough LLC for a beer and wine license this year?
Yes.
And is that signed by Mr. Johnny Betts as the agent for Dog's Borough LLC?
Yes.
And is that the person who's supposed to have control of the business?
Yes.
And did the board of commissioners vote to deny that application?
Yes.
And can you identify this Exhibit 3 as a copy of the letter that I sent to Mr. Betts, dated May 5th, explaining that the license had been denied and the reasons for that?
Yes, that is correct.
And just in summary of the first part of that... First part of that letter, the reason for denial is that it appeared that Dog's Borough LLC and Mr. Betts were acting as a surrogate for a person named Mohamed Shafik. Is that right?
Yes.
You haven't seen these before, but these are the criminal records for... And the Rico suit records.
Yeah, I'll just object to relevance.
And I'm just going to show you that as Exhibit 4, and I would just ask you, I guess, just looking at the top, do those appear to be records in the court of course office concerning charges and sue or sue against Mr. Mohamed Shafik?
Yes.
And going back to the ordinance, the Section 6-63I lists some reasons that people would not be qualified to hold a beer and wine license. Things like if you've had a criminal conviction within a certain period of time, or if you're on parole or probation.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, let me show you Exhibit 5. Is this a copy of the lease that Mr. Betts provided, or Mr. Betts' agent Melanie Dove provided with his application for this year?
Yes.
And if you'll... That lease, by the way, that's from Hull Jackson Properties to Dog's Borough LLC, right?
Right.
And on the last page, is it... Do you see the signature of Mohamed Shafik signed as the member manager for Hull Jackson Properties?
Yes.
Let me show you Exhibit 6. This is the certificate of organization, Articles of Organization for Hull Jackson Properties. Could you flip to the back page and tell us who the organizer is? I think it's our attorney's name.
Eric Crassel.
And is that the attorney who appeared at the meetings earlier this year representing Mr. Betts and Dog's Borough LLC?
Yes.
His name is Eric Crassel.
Crassel. K-R-A-S-L-E.
And let me show you this. Recognize this as a printout from the Secretary of State's office. This is the 2021 Annual Registration for Hull Jackson Properties LLC. And who is the authorized signature here?
Mohamed Shafik.
Now, since you're a county clerk here, I worked in county clerk's office for 13 years. Do you recall the prior tenant of that business was a... Or tenant of that location was Amir Inc. and its principal, Urfaan Hamid?
I sure do.
And is that a copy of Mr. Hamid's lease that he provided to you when he applied for a beer and wine license?
Yes.
Is that a...
Yes.
So, do you see... I may have to come help you find it, but do you see the term of that lease? I think it's towards the bottom of the first page.
December 2016 at 2:00 PM and ending at 2:00 PM on November 30, 2021.
Okay. But Mr. Betts' lease, Dog's Borough LLC, it starts in 2018, right?
Yes.
Okay.
March 23rd.
Before we get to that discrepancy, let me show you these two. Has Mr. Betts and his business... Have Mr. Betts and his business applied for a beer and wine license before?
Yes.
Were those applications denied before?
Yes.
And do you recognize Exhibit 9 as a copy of his 2018 application?
Yes.
And Exhibit 10 is his 2019 application?
Yes.
And do you recognize Exhibit 11 as a copy of the letters that I sent as county attorney explaining that those had been denied and the reasons for denial?
Yes.
Now, in those letters, they raised the issue of that overlap in the lease that once started. Was any explanation ever provided to you or to the board of commissioners to your knowledge as to why there was this overlap?
No, not to me.
This time, this year, when it was raised, did Mr. Betts through Mr. Dove, Ms. Dove, provide you with a copy of this Exhibit 12?
Yes.
And that's purported to be a cancellation of that lease signed by Mr. Hamid, right?
Right.
Who's the witness on that cancellation?
Melanie Dove.
Now, when did you first meet Melanie Dove?
This year, when she submitted the application for Mr. Betts.
Were all of your conversations concerning Mr. Betts' application with Melanie Dove?
The except for when he came in for fingerprinting.
Okay. And did Ms. Dove appear and speak for Mr. Betts at all the meetings concerning this application?
Yes.
Did Ms. Betts state at these meetings that she's the store manager or general manager of that store?
Yes.
Do you remember after May 3rd meeting, Ms. Dove was asked if she had any relationship with Mohamed Shafik?
Yes.
Do you remember what she said?
Yes, she did.
She said she did have some relationship. Did she say that was a personal relationship?
Personal relationship.
Did she explain that any further?
No.
Is this... There's a USB stick in here. Is this a recording of that meeting that you made?
I gave you a recording of that meeting. That's my MRA.
Okay. And last thing I want to ask you. If you go back to the Dog's Borough LLC lease, I think that's Exhibit 5. Will you go towards the back on Item 31-F? And who does that say that Dog's Borough is buying the business and inventory from?
The client.
Now, would you look at the 2018 application, that's Exhibit 9?
Yes.
And what did Mr. Betts say in front of that application about buying the business?
Leasing the building only bought the business from Mr. Shafik on 4/1/18.
All right, I think that's all we need to put in the record. Mr. Kane, I may have some questions for you.
Yes, Ms. Wooten. My name is Adam Kane. I'm representing the applicant. Let's just go directly to Exhibit 5, the lease agreement, to that paragraph you just questioned about. Sell the business paragraph, subsection F, page 11. The sale of these inventories back in 2018, that's not a reason for denying the permit, is that correct?
Correct.
Now... Let's go to the ordinance. That was the reason for the denial of my client's application, I believe it was Exhibit 1. G, when was this section added to the ordinance?
Now, where are we at? Section 663?
G, the reason for the denial of my client's permit.
663?
G, yes.
When was this added to the ordinance?
Yes, you know?
No.
Were you a part of this addition?
Pardon me?
Were you part of this addition?
Was I a part of this amendment to the ordinance?
Correct.
I don't recall.
Now, have you ever been trained in to review this section when someone's pleaded an application?
No. I just received the application.
Now, the application you received, I believe it's been marked as Exhibit Number 2, is that correct?
Yes.
This is for Dog's Borough LLC, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Betts is the... Named the member agent of that LLC, is that correct? Nowhere in this application is Mohamed Shafik listed, is that correct?
That's correct.
He has no connection whatsoever with Dog's Borough LLC in the application, is that correct?
Not in the application.
Okay. The lease agreement, Exhibit 5, does Mr. Shafik have any individual interest whatsoever in that lease agreement?
Can't we read this whole lease agreement?
Yeah, if you want to.
You state for the record that I don't know if Ms. Wooten would know individual versus what member manager means, but, you know, obviously she answered the question with investor liability.
Well, I hope she does. That's a major issue here.
And what's the question again?
Do you know the difference between a corporation, limited liability company, and an individual?
I know the difference between an individual and a limited liability company.
Now, is Mr. Mohamed Shafik's name listed anywhere individually in this lease agreement?
As a landlord.
Is his name individually listed?
Just as Mohamed Shafik, not Hull Jackson Property LLC?
Hull Jackson LLC is the landlord, is that correct?
Yes.
That's who rent's paid to, is that correct?
Yes. And as Mohamed Shafik as the landlord or agent.
Agent for the LLC, is that correct? Do you know what... Georgia law requires of an LLC?
No, it doesn't.
Do you know what interest, if anything, Mohamed Shafik has with Hull Jackson Property LLC?
No.
When this application was filled out, Mr. Betts has to swear to certain things, is that correct?
It has to be noted, right?
Okay, let's go through the application, Exhibit Number 2. Let's flip to the second page. It fills out all the information regarding the LLC and what the... Where the permit is being applied for, is that correct?
We're on the second page?
Yes.
Yes.
We go to the third page. It says general provisions. Are you familiar with the state laws and county ordinance regarding the sale of alcohol beverages? It's marked with an X, yes, is that correct?
Yes.
Next one, do you have an existing beer, wine, liquor license or business in, say, Georgia? It's an X on no, is that correct?
That's correct.
Question 3, have you ever been convicted or pled guilty or entered a plea of no one pretender to any felony or misdemeanor involving alcoholic beverage or drugs with a period of three years immediately prior to the filing this application? That's an X, no, is that correct?
That's correct.
Have you ever been the holder of an alcoholic beverage license that was suspended or revoked? That's X, no, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then if it says yes, you can go back to explain it. There's nothing there to explain, is that correct?
That's correct.
Let's flip to the next page. Criminal background check on the subsection F. He signed for a criminal background check, is that correct? Mr. Betts has an agent for Dog's Borough LLC, is that correct?
Yes.
Who performs that criminal background check?
The sheriff's office.
And did he come back with any felonies on his criminal background check?
No.
And he was fingerprinted as well, is that correct? Next one, the next page, it says paragraph G, advertisement and posting. Basically, he goes through what is required under the ordinances for the sale of alcohol pushing the signage, is that correct?
Yes.
Next, I... Next page on I, verification under oath. This is where he swears, Mr. Betts, as an agent for Dog's Borough LLC, swears to adhere to the county ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
This was submitted to you by Mr. Betts as a member manager of Dog's Borough LLC, is that correct?
Well, it was submitted by Melanie Dove, but...
It was handed over by Mrs. Melanie Dove?
Right.
Okay, but she's just a... She says she's a manager of the store that the application was sent from, is that correct?
That's correct.
Melanie Dove's affiliation with Mohamed Shafik in a personal relationship would have no bearing whatsoever for denial of this permit, is that correct?
Objection.
That's correct.
You can answer.
I would not say that's correct.
Tell me why.
Well... I don't think it would be appropriate for me to explain that.
You have to have... You believe it's relevant. How is it relevant?
It establishes a relationship.
A personal relationship that has nothing to do with Dog's Borough LLC.
It would be the appearance of a surrogate.
Let's go to the ordinance. Appears. Is that a factual or a subjective, is that basic? Is it a way to deny permits for any reason whatsoever? Is that a fair statement? That language appears.
Where are you?
The ordinance.
Well, it's 12 pages where...
G, the reason for the denial of this permit. The main reason for the denial of this permit has to do with that appears.
What is your question?
Doesn't that set up... This ordinance sets up this commission to deny a permit basically for any reason based on any type of speculation, even though it's not factual to deny a permit, is that correct?
It's where it appears.
Excuse me?
Where it appears, the application is intended to be a mere surrogate.
So, you have a lease agreement here, is that correct? The Hull Jackson Properties LLC, the Dog's Borough LLC, that was executed on March 23rd, 2018. That's Exhibit Number 5.
Okay.
Then, ended at sold the inventory to Dog's Borough LLC, is that correct?
We're looking at Exhibit 5.
It's referenced in paragraph 31, I believe, F, 31F. They sold the inventory to Dog's Borough LLC in 2018. Dog's Borough LLC has been operating at that location since 2018 to the best of your knowledge, is that correct?
What was the date? Dog's Borough LLC?
Since March 2018, approximately.
Is that the date of the lease?
I believe March 23rd.
So, since March, approximately March of 2018, they've been operating the Quikymart there off of Highway 29 North, is that correct?
I believe so. According to the lease.
Now, there was some denials previously done, denials of a application by Dog's Borough back in 2018, 2019, Exhibit 9 and 10. What were the reasons for those denials?
I think there was one for the... Let me look at Exhibit 6.
You think so?
Okay, so I would have to read the denial letter to be able to address that.
Those are all one of the exhibits.
I think it's Exhibit 11. 9 and 10, and then your letter, Exhibit 11, is not.
Yeah. If you need a copy of Exhibit 11, I'll put it here. Well, Mr. Kane, they wanted... That would be... That would have the reasons so you don't have to read them all, read the letters all out loud.
Okay. Application raises substantial concerns if he does not have adequate financial participation in the proposed business to direct and manage its affairs and/or that he is acting as a mere surrogate for another. The last few words you said... And/or that he is acting as a mere surrogate for another.
He doesn't list who that other is?
He doesn't.
In that letter, does not say who the possible surrogate is?
Do you want to give her time to read the whole thing?
Mr. Shafik.
Because he is a member manager, Mr. Shafik of Hull Property LLC?
Objection.
Asking me?
Yes.
The letter speaks for itself, and don't mischaracterize it.
Now... Are you aware that Dog's Borough LLC is paying rent to Hull Jackson Property LLC for the property?
There's a lease agreement.
Now, do you know if Dog's Borough LLC has filed taxes, signed by Mr. Betts as a member manager, over the past three years?
I don't have any.
Now... Let's go back to the ordinance under the I section of Section 663. You were questioned that these are other reasons for denials of an application. None of these reasons were the denial of Dog's Borough LLC's application that we're here about today, is that correct?
Objection. You can answer.
What was the question?
These other reasons for a denial of a application for an alcohol license under Section I of 663, none of those reasons were the reason why this board denied Dog's Borough LLC's application.
So, you can answer.
Yeah, I'd have to read the letter. I'm not on the board.
Okay. You can read the letter. It's Exhibit 3.
3. Well, isn't it in the letter? Isn't it in the exhibit? Am I supposed to interpret the letter?
What's...
You want me to read the letter?
What's the reason? None of the... The only reason for the denial of Dog's Borough LLC, let me just question it this way, is the board believed there appeared to be some type of surrogate relationship between Mohamed Shafik and his LLC in Dog's Borough LLC in violation of Section 6-63G.
6-63G and 6-63I. Those are the two reasons for denial.
Because of Mr. Shafik's criminal history.
That was one of them.
He's not the actor, is that correct?
That is correct. The 663 is talking about being a mere surrogate. 663I is the criminal history.
So... Mr. Shafik's connection as an agent for an LLC, being the landlord of Dog's Borough, is what the board here is claiming, is the surrogate relationship, is that correct?
Objection, mischaracterizes, but you can answer. And again, and just to explain to everybody, obviously, we don't have a judge here to rule on this, so it's sort of like a deposition where, you know, Mr. Kane and I both have to state our objections now, and if this goes to Superior Court, the judge will decide this stuff, so...
We just reserve all objections, just write it down on the record.
Exactly, that's right.
Now, last question is, when... Since you've been the clerk, have you ever denied a previous application for this reason that we're here about today?
Yes.
How many?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you that.
10, five, a ballpark?
Did you ask if she's denied or if the board is denied?
The board denied.
The board denied, okay.
Less than 10.
Your first question, thank you very much.
All right. I have two more witnesses, and they'll both be real short. Linda, if you will do it for them, call Linda Fortson. And what we talked about with the court reporter, if you can just stand here at the podium, she can pick you up just fine on her mic. And if you'll just tell us, you know, for the record, your name and your position here at the county.
Linda Fortson. I'm the zoning administrator.
And do you ever deal with properties owned by Mohamed Shafik as his owner and administrator?
Yes.
And when somebody contacts you on Mr. Shafik's behalf, who is that usually?
Melanie Dove.
And is that just in connection with this 9029, Highway 29 South, where the quick check is? Or is that with the other properties he owns as well?
Other properties.
Okay. Do you know anything about lease amounts for commercial properties here, in that's a getting?
Not a lot. I do... I know more around the city of Danielsville, what they get.
Okay. Are you familiar with the property where this store is located we're talking about?
I am.
Would you say $4,000 a month is pretty high for that property?
I'm going to object. She just has space enough to know the values of property in that area, so I don't think she's qualified to answer what she can go with.
Okay. What do you know about commercial lease amounts out there?
I know normally, the city of Danielsville, the strip model up here gets $1,500 to $1,800 a month.
Okay.
So, I would say, yes, that's high.
Okay. $6,000 a month would be even higher?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, Ms. Linda Fortson.
I just wanted to go over your story. Are you familiar with leasing prices for gas stations?
No.
Are you familiar with the gas stations that are located on a major thoroughfare? Major thorough... Road.
You mean leasing?
Yes.
No.
So, you are familiar with this piece of property, is that correct?
I am.
And it is a high-traffic area, is that correct?
It is.
So, you have no idea what a gas station would rent for in that area?
I do not.
You don't know $4,000 is reasonable?
To me, it would be high, but I do not know. I don't deal with leases.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. And last thing, if Mr. Lamar Dalton will come up, and you can just stand here at the podium like Linda did. Mr. Lamar, yeah, can you just tell us your name and who you are, what you do?
I'm Lamar Dalton. I'm tax commissioner in Madison County.
And, let's see. So, owner around May 4th... So, over around May 14th, did you just happen to be in the vicinity of the quick check out there at Paul?
I did. My wife buys a lot of furniture and stuff on wine, and we were going up and down to pick up some bread.
And did you see somebody checking the gas in the holding tanks, see how much was left?
I did. I stopped at the light right there where Bill's is, and I looked across, and I remember telling my wife, I said, "See that man checking the gas right there? He don't have anything to do with this store right here." It was two gentlemen, it was Mohammed and a taller, maybe Indian guy, my height makes him a little taller, slim, but... And I watched him from the time I turned into traffic, and I got about where the dollar store thing is, and they were standing there with a check stick pointing.
Okay. Wasn't Johnny Betts or Melanie Dove?
It was not.
It was Mohammed Shafik?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, sir.
Alright, so you don't know what Mr. Shafik was doing?
No, he just had the gas check and stick up in there.
You don't know if he was trying to help somebody out?
Could have been.
You know he's the agent for the, do you know that he's an agent for that property as a landlord? You understand that?
I don't have a dog in the fire, I'm just painting what I'm seeing.
So, how did you know that, you made the statement to your wife that, "Look, that man right there has nothing to do with that business." How did you know that?
Because it's been going on for years.
Tell me about it.
You just sat here and talked to Rondell, I mean, it's the same thing.
How'd you know it's been going on for years?
I've been a tax commissioner of Madison County for six years.
Okay. So, word's getting around by Mr. Shafik?
No, 2015 only. Mr. Shafik's been a regular in here in the commission meetings and stuff like that. That's how I knew who he was.
Okay. But, how'd you know he had no connection with the business?
Because he said he didn't.
Okay. Or do you have evidence here that suggests he has? Any connection with it?
I do not.
Okay. Sir, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Alright.
Pissed out.
Excuse me? I'm just doing my job.
No.
That's, so that's all we have. I think you don't have any witnesses to present, but, you know, if you do, that's fine.
I do not.
Okay. So, I think we're adjourned and ready for the board vote? Not adjourned, but the evidence is close. So, the board is, the board needs to vote on whether to uphold the denial or reverse it and grant the license.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yes, sir, you're the presiding officer.
Okay. The reason I, the reason I say this was, on that thumb drive you have, I think Ms. Dove said that Mohammed was just the building owner, is what he had said, and he had no connection to the store whatsoever, and no conducting daily business at the store, is what I think that thumb drive has on him.
I think that's consistent with the evidence that...
Yeah.
That's his position.
That may have been, the reason I'm asking.
I haven't listened to it, so I don't know.
Okay. So I'm just saying, that may have been the reason the gas stick was brought up. She said he didn't have no connection, but he had their gas stick in his hand.
Well, what his testimony was, he didn't know what he was doing, could be helping out. We don't know. I mean, that's speculation again.
Mike, again, I'm just saying that she made a reference, he had nothing to do with it, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay.
At this time... I would ask the board, with the proceedings that we just witnessed, I would ask for a motion to approve or deny the 2021 beer and wine license for Doggsboro LLC.
I'd just add that, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, as usual, once we get a motion in a second, the board can discuss.
Sir.
I'll make a motion to deny. Uphold the denial, second motion.
I have a first by Mr. Kirk, second by Mr. Chandler, any discussion?
My feelings on this is that Mr. Kane here not really presented anything I didn't already know, and I still have my reservations that this is a arms-length transaction type thing going on, so that's the reason I propose that we deny.
Any other discussion?
Just for the record, and so that I understand, the meaning that Ms. Dove said that she had a personal relationship with Mr. Shafik, and I'm asking the other board members to make sure, my perception of it was no different than yours. Does anyone feel or believe she was coerced into saying that? Have you heard it all?
No.
But repeatedly prior to that, I believe, I recall the question being asked, was there any relationships, was it arms-length? And, and all I heard out of those conversations was, no, there wasn't. No, there wasn't. I mean, literally, she volunteered this, and if I remember correctly, it was, had a question that wasn't even related to that, if I remember when that came out. I just...
For my recollection on that, Dennis, Ms. Bettis at the time, previous commissioner, asked a question, do you have a relationship? And I think it started off with a sort of, and she said, could you please elaborate? Are you in a relationship? And she said, yes, personally, or something to that effect.
Okay. Arms-length. This is not an arms-length, there's a lease agreement in place, this is not an arms-length, this is not just a verbal agreement, there's a lease in place that's been in place since 2018. Just for the record.
From, for statements, for me, the way I see this is exactly like that night's meeting. It, it would give the appearance, if you reside at the residence of the building owner, that there would be a conflict of interest for you representing for an application. It's just perception. Just my point.
I guess just for the record and to go back and the reason that I made the motion is, you know, you can, it happens all the time, I've worked in the banking industry, and you can produce documents to make things look one way, but the factual evidence and the facts are something else. And I believe this maybe is, not maybe, I believe this is the case, and that's the reason I go forward with my, until proven wrong.
I remember commissioners, the evidence is close, so this is just a discussion among yourselves before your...
This is a discussion.
I'm in that, and I just want to make it, that's, I just want to make it clear, clear for that.
Any other discussion? Hearing nine. Mr. Adams.
Deny.
Uphold the denial.
Uphold the denial. Yes, uphold the denial.
Uphold the denial.
Uphold the denial.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good, thank you, sir. Motion to adjourn, gentlemen? Derek, Chandler, second, all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Rondell, I would like to applaud you for being, no, no, for being a trooper on that. Yes, this is not your daily duties, and, and I can only imagine having to catch a question that's not in your wheelhouse, I guess, to say, but...